Anybody there?
Is that Jay?
It's Jay, yeah.
I see Jay, I don't see anyone else. I see Rebecca.
I saw Bill Sam's name.
Yeah, yeah, there he is. Very good. Oh, I see Rebecca. Okay, we're coming in.
Ooh.
What do you have there Rebecca?
I'm in the museum, I'm freezing.
There's Cory.
Hi there.
Hi Bill, hi Gary.
What's going on?
Well.
I mean Rebecca, what's going on? Why is... Why are you in the museum part freezing? Is it that turned down that low or is there a problem with the furnace?
No, it's quiet from away from the kids. We keep it really low in here to save on the oil.
Yeah. Makes sense. Why is it getting below freezing? Yeah.
There's Missy, I see Missy now.
Missy.
Looks like Papa Vinny is still connecting. Hey Vin, are you there? I saw that he was trying to connect, but I don't see Vin's picture. There he is, there he is. There he is.
Vin, it looks like you don't have a microphone connected.
Oh no, Vin's picture disappeared.
Yeah.
Hey Vin, are you there? It doesn't say connecting, so I don't know.
So, there's no, if you click on the participants, it lists him. But it doesn't show a microphone, which means he has no audio.
Oh shucks.
So I'm thinking he probably can't hear us either.
Yeah, probably not. He didn't say anything, oops. Oh, there's Vin. Hey Vin, can you hear us? Vin? Are you connected to sound? Vin, can you see the logo in the lower left for the picture of the microphone? Does it have a red line through it?
Can you hear me?
Yeah, oh yeah, good. Okay, you're connected.
Took me a while to find the right thing to put.
Okay.
Hi Lance.
Hi there.
Who else do we have on?
Okay.
Jay's on.
Jack?
Missy. It's on. But Doug, hi.
He's on the phone.
I'm on.
Okay, good. I think Lance is on. Okay, so call to order and the roll call. So it's me, Missy, Doug, Jay, and Lance. Okay. So we've got one, two, three, four, five. And Lance should be a voting member for this meeting. Okay?
Okay.
All right. Okay, who else did I see on? I think Bill.
Yep, hi Vin.
Hey, how you doing?
Good, how are you guys?
Good to see you. Are you, you're still in transition? Is there a, we have a new liaison, is that correct?
I don't think so, you're stuck with me.
No, we love you. That's, I thought I saw well. I thought I saw something that was a change in our liaison, but if not, that's good. That's good. Okay.
I'm here too Vin.
Oh Rebecca, thanks. Good, good, good to see you. All right. First item on the agenda is review and approval of the minutes for my last meeting. Does anyone have any additions, corrections, modifications that they'd like to propose?
No.
I was there.
Nope.
Okay. Yeah, you were there. Should probably note that. All right, well hearing, hearing none other than I will call for a vote to accept minutes.
My conclusion that we accept the minutes, Jay Peeler.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Oh, second, this is Doug.
It's Doug, seconding. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Okay, so the minutes are accepted unanimously. All right, now let me, oh, I should have mentioned that Bill Bill Barnes is on travel and is excused, excused from the meeting. Don't have a report from him, but I do know that on the grant that we received, the $20,000 grant to do you know, an assessment of the mill by an architectural engineering firm. That he has prepared a RFP that will I just got that yesterday. And after, after I review it and Alan reviews it. I have to check with the town hall. Maybe, maybe Bill, Bill knows whether or not we need some, someone you know, in the, in the office there to look at this before, before we send it out for bid. The first, the first thing we would do is send it to the person in charge of these grants and Mary Dunn is her name. And she offered to take a look at it before we publish it. You know, just to make sure that as far as the state is concerned, we've you know, it's, it meets their, their standards. And it should because she sent us a a sample of one that they've had. And it, it looks like Bill has pretty much followed, followed, follows that. It has all the you know, legalese kind of words in there that we normally wouldn't think to put in, but of course the state, the state does.
So I would, I would send it to the finance director Vin, because they, they do have a process for soliciting bids.
Okay, all right.
It's a good idea to send, so we have a new finance director, Marcia is retired. And the new finance director's name is Matt Bonin. But if you just send it to Marcia's email, it'll now go to him.
Okay. All right.
I'd send a copy to Roxanne too.
Yeah, we can, we can, all of us be reviewing it, you know, in parallel. So we can then, you know, make any changes and we can get it, get it back to Murray. All right, thank you.
Sure.
Other than that, I'm I'm not sure if there's any, anything else for the Sawmill. I know, I know the the guys, you know, the group there is continuing to have work, work sessions and and accomplish things, weather permitting and so forth. So their, their activities go on throughout, throughout the, throughout the year. Okay, the Lester House. Our committee met last week and decided that we, we will hold our old fashioned fourth this year on, on the 4th, which is, which is a Monday. But of course, that's, you know, assuming that we're in a condition with regard to COVID and whatever else might, might happen to, to hold such, such an event. The thing that's working in our favor here is that a lot of the activities, most of them would be outdoors. So that's, you know, that's a plus. The Historical Society will be assisting us and help, helping us, but we'll have the lead. They're just not in a situation to furnish, you know, take the lead and, and do the heavy lifting as far as this event is concerned. But we've already got, got some assignments and members of the committee, plus, plus Kit Foster are looking into some vendors, artisans and things that, that we already have sort of in mind to be part of the, the event. Jay or Doug? Missy, Rebecca, anything else you want to add to that? Okay. The leaky pipes we had in the basement were fixed by Pro Plumbing. He had to come back twice, but he finally got it, got it done. And the cost was $300. We issued a PO to Hesplar, electrical contractor for $1,200 to install two fan heater units in the two bathrooms, the one in the quarters and one in the museum. We don't turn those on. I think Rebecca has the switches taped because when you turn them on, they spark and we don't think that's, that's such a great, great thing. The PO is out and the electrician that we've used, John Hesplar, who's very, very good. But he contracted COVID over the holidays, so he, he was sort of laid up for a while, but sounds like he's back in the swing of it, so we should get that done fairly soon.
He was here today. John Hesplar was here today.
He was, okay. Excellent. Excellent, that's good, good to hear. Does he, does he look like he's recovered?
He looked very tired. And he did look at some of those other projects while he was here too. The light over the sink. And then he looked up and saw that there's no light fixtures in our kitchen.
Oh yeah.
Um, so yeah, so he did come today and look at that and the broken light outside he looked at while he was here.
Okay. Okay, good. Okay, we, we need to, we need to get a carpenter in to, to look at several, several things that need, need fixing basically. The doors, two doors in the barn and the carpenter shed are in need, in need of repair, they're kind of falling apart. And the stairs in the cellar are shaky at, at best. So have, have to have those looked at and probably reinforced in some way. The the rail and the fence in front of the house that the ends were rotted, I managed to cut them off and put a, put a new piece on the end, so it's, it's in good shape. I also gave it a prime coat of paint. So it's ready to go up, so we just have to, have to install it. It's not a big deal, but I've been sort of waiting for a day when it's the sun's out and it's, it's not too chilly to do, to do the work. Okay. We need to get the mower serviced now. And this, you know, before, before the grass starts to grow, let's, let's put it that way. We, I think last year we were laid on it and we had cutting to do, but the machine was being fixed, so try to avoid that, that situation. Oh, we've got a leak in the barn roof that's right over the fireplace that's in, in the barn. So my guess is it's, it's flash, it's a flash, flashing problem with chimney there. And we'll get a chimney, chimney guy to come, come in and take a look at it and fix it. And we've got a painter plaster. He's coming back, he's already checked, checked the house. Looked, looked at all, all the rooms and so forth, but they, to, to do everything. You know, paint the whole, repair all the plaster of the museum and do all the painting. I think his, his quote was something like well, it's about 20,000, which I'm not surprised at, I mean, this is, this is how, how it goes. We don't have that amount of money in this year's budget, budget, we've got probably about five, 5,000 that, that we could, we could use. So he's coming in and we're gonna identify the worst. We could probably do a couple of rooms for that, is my guess. But we want to identify the two worst ones, so he tackles those. Rebecca, raising your hand?
No, the ceiling that's falling above my head.
That, that would be probably a good one. Yeah.
Probably number one.
What was that?
I said that's probably number one.
That's probably number one?
Yes, definitely.
Right. So that, that, we should get done, you know, get that going fairly soon. Oh, the, the rodent infestation that we're, that we're faced with. We have, we have a contract now with Orkin. And their technician was there last week, Rebecca?
Yes, last Thursday.
Last week, and he installed snap traps and glue boards. I guess mostly in the museum because you've got that covered in the quarters.
Yeah, mostly in the museum, he did it. I did have a lot in here anyways, so he just added a few more to spots that he thought rodents might be coming in.
Yeah. I think he, he was planning, their plan was to put them in the basement too.
They did put some snap traps in the basement, but they like put them on stones. So I'm not exactly sure how the mice are supposed to get to said stones that are sticking out of the So I'm not exactly sure how the mice are supposed to get to said stones that are sticking out of the side of the basement, but they're the professionals, so.
Well, we're relying on them. And he also, I think, put put a couple outside.
Yes, he put two out.
Okay, now if going with the snap traps and glue boards, the most of the several other companies that I contacted, all they wanted to do was use poison. And we we kind of felt that that's the problem with poison in the house is the mice are supposed to go outside to die, but they don't always do that. And then they go and get back in the walls or spaces where you can't get to them and die. And then you've got a bunch of dead dead mice smelling up the house and so forth. So the feeling was let's let's go with, you know, a more a safer route. And that's what Orken proposed. And we'll, you know, they're under contract. They'll come back every two weeks, I believe, or on call if there's a specific issue. And we'll we'll give them the three months and see how how it goes.
When they came, they said they were only doing a one time service and then he'd be back to pick up all of his traps and get any rodents that were left. He wasn't under the impression that it was a um so I was like, I don't know how much that's gonna work.
Our our new finance director just signed a service agreement that calls for month one installation and then one return trip to this month and then two return trips in the next the second second month and the third month to three month contract. So he apparently hasn't seen the the contract himself. He didn't. He didn't negotiate it. It was, you know, somebody he works for.
We also stuff the holes with copper, like copper steel wool, which I've been doing steel wool everywhere that I can find, but I know we have a lot of holes that need to be stuffed with the steel wool around loops and holes in the foundation and a lot.
Okay, well, hopefully that'll that'll help, you know, keep some of them out. So anyway, that's the status of that that problem. All right, that's that's all I have. Okay, any any other inputs?
We had, we also had the leak in the basement, the leaky wall that we need to figure out who can fix it. Um, and the lead plan.
Oh, the yeah, thanks. Yeah, the remediation maintenance plan to make sure the lead doesn't come back. And we need, I think we need, and they offered to help, Ledge Light, said they would help us with that. So I need to give give them a call and see when when she can at least give us a template. You know, for 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 a plan.
Yes, and I talked to them today because I had I finally closed out my tenant side of the the issues with Ledge Light. So my part is now done. The kids got retested. They tested under levels. Mark tested at four, but it's still under five, so we're good. Um, so the tenant side of that case, the cases are all closed out now.
Okay, good. That's good news. That's good. Okay. All right, research, Lance, any any news?
Sure. Yeah, since since our last meeting, Missy and Doug and I had a Zoom meeting to talk about our, you know, pushing forward the plan for signage on historic buildings. And, you know, we're we're going a couple of different directions where maybe one thing I'll talk about is that we were interested in how other towns administer administer programs like this. And I was a little surprised to see that in on the Stonington side of Mystic and in Stonington Borough, the Stonington Historical Society manages it. And they actually charge quite a high fee. They charge $500 to for someone to sign up to the program where people at the Historical Society do research and then the homeowner gets a plaque. And that's that sounds a lot more like Stonington than Ledyard, maybe. And, you know, a friend of ours who's who's dealt with the Mystic signage said, you know, maybe they're a little snooty and people could brag to each other at parties that they spent $500 for a sign, especially since we know that the signs themselves cost under $100. And New London charges $250. But as part of this, they also offer the services of people who will help the homeowner research the their house. And I don't know, I I think that, you know, Missy and Doug and I have really chatted just briefly about this, but I sort of wonder if a plan, sort of a compromise between the two, I think in Ledyard, you're not going to get many people willing to spend $500 for a plaque, especially if they know that the plaque itself costs under $100. So I'm wondering if maybe we could offer a plaque to people at a little closer to the actual price of the plaque and offered to assist them a little bit in researching the date of their house if if they need such help. I know a lot of the historic buildings have already had a good job of research done by Rusty and Jan Bell and in their publications. So, you know, that's that's something we're, you know, Missy and Doug and I are going to have to just kind of talk about some more. And also, you know, welcome input from the other committee members. And and the other the other thing we talked about is that I I sort of imagine, you know, Doug and Missy and I are imagining a a double barrel program where there are houses that have individual signs for a house. And then other signs, which are more like the large sign at Gail's Ferry Landing with, you know, a longer text that explains a public building or a public place, not an historic sign. So these are the things we've been talking about, and I I'm assuming we're going to have to have another meeting soon to think some more about these things. But again, we welcome any input from other board members, you know, now or or later by email later.
Okay, you know, if I mean, my wife is has researched a lot of a lot of homes that went into the books. And I'll tell you, if you're if you're starting from scratch, okay, on a home that people think was built, you know, in 1750, but they don't have much documentation and you're going back to the original property transaction and tracing it all the way up to this this house, $500 is a bargain. If if you're going to do all the work, but you you know, sure.
I know that. I know that, too. I know that, too.
I I think I agree. I I think it's it's the the most of the work with some guidance from us, I would I would think that the homeowner should take on a good a good good part of that with with, you know, some some direction guidance on on how to, you know, how to do it.
No, no, I am. Go on, go on, finish. Well, I I was just thinking that, you know, I I can imagine our guidance taking the form of this is, you know, turning the question in a slightly different direction, but I I'm friends with Tom Kouser, who's on New London Landmarks. And what they did was they got information from the homeowner and helped them try to interpret it. In other words, helping to interpret the documentation that the homeowner has dug up may be our most most useful function. And I got involved in this a little bit. I know something about old houses and, you know, Tom talked to me and asked me my opinion about some things that people were claiming were early 18th century. And I just, as a, you know, picture of the house nowadays, looking at the foundation, if it has tall, nicely cut rectangular foundation blocks, it's unlikely from the early 18th century, just because that kind of foundation wasn't often used then. It's more likely, you know, almost Greek revival period. And if the house has Greek revival aspects, maybe that's your date. So I imagine this sort of you know, helping people to interpret, although it's funny, I, you know, you could very soon come up with ambiguities and uncertainties. Unless the frame of a house is exposed, that can make it very difficult to date if you're talking about when in the 18th century it was built. But anyway, these these are, you know, these are, you know, things that I think can be worked out without any of us. And, you know, Missy and Doug are probably more concerned about this than I because I'm retired. You know, in theory, I have lots of time to to help people if they'd like, but I think we'll have to talk about these things much more.
And of course, there there are probably, well, we know of at least one house that has been researched and is documented that that Melissa lives 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 in. And so there it's fully, you know, that's that's done for that. And there may be others. If if the house is in any of the Historical Society books, they've they've been researched. Okay.
Yes.
So those those folks, all they really have to do is pay for a sign, you know, and then they're set.
Right.
Okay, that's that's not that sounds good. Thank, thank, thank you. All right, we got preservation. Center School can is absent. And social media, Melissa, any?
No, I don't have any updates at this time.
Hang on on that.
No, not yet.
Okay. Well, I should should have probably mentioned it when I went over the the Lester House, but I'm going to discontinue being chairman of the Leicester House Committee. I just have gotten to the to the point where I have to give some some things up because I just have don't have quite quite the energy and stamina that that I had at one one time. So I asked Doug and and Missy, realizing that many of us have full time jobs. And my feeling is for one person with a full time job, it's it's a load. It's it's it really is. But I know they are very interested, have spent, you know, a lot of time and so forth with the on the house, especially Doug, who goes back many, many years, but but Missy, since she's been on, has really taken a good good interest in it and and effort. So they would be co-chairs for that for that committee, sharing sharing the responsibilities. They know each other well, have worked together in many, many different ways. So I I think that the cooperation between them will will be very, very smooth. And we're dedicated. So that's what my my plan is. I've talked or gotten word from most of the committee members as as to if they're in favor, you know, okay with this. So far, everyone has been. But Jay, I didn't get any, I emailed it.
I know, I saw the email. I sent up her the email late today. I I have no problem with it.
Okay, good.
I agree. It's a good choice.
Okay, okay, then thank you.
I also got your email, Ben.
Are you okay? You you
I am good with it, but I had questions. That's why I didn't email you back because I knew I'd see you tonight. It's like, first I have to say thank you for all your hard work. Because we've been through it.
Definitely.
Thank you. Thank you. Well, I think I think Doug and Missy have, you know, have to sort of get together and work work out a few things on you know, just just to to do the to do the job.
What does it mean that changes, though? What what does it change like? Like in the daily running, how does that change the things with, you know? You know?
Well, I I think when, you know, when you something comes up or you have a question or a problem, you'll contact one of them instead of me.
Day to day won't change, Rebecca. It's just whatever you went to Ven for, you'd come to Doug and I for.
Okay, and are you guys doing the permits or is that still Ven?
I think that, so here's the thing, this just happened yesterday, so I would like to set up some sort of transition meeting with with Ven and Doug and myself, just to cover everything that he has been doing and what we'll be doing going going forward. And once we have that worked out, we'll share it with you.
Thank you, because I was a little shocked today.
Yep, no problem.
Okay, all right, great. Let's see. All right, that's just that time of the year and the month when we elect our officers, the commission. And so I'll I'm going to open it up for for nominations.
Hey, Ben.
Since we'll start with chair chairman.
Ben. Before you before you go there, you skipped over old business.
I'm sorry?
You skipped over if anybody had any old business to discuss.
Oh, okay, okay, thank you. I skipped. I do that, you know, I just not paying much attention to my agenda here and skip over. Yes, any old business that anyone would like to bring up? Hearing none? Okay, we'll pass. We'll move on to new business. And the first item there is the election of officers. So I will open it up for nominations for the the chairman position.
I nominate Ven for another term as chairman.
I would second that.
Is it second? I had seconds it.
Second that.
Okay. Are there any other nominations? Okay, here hearing none, then we'll vote on the motion to have me serve another year as chairman. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Opposed? None, okay, but that's unanimous. Guess I'm stuck with it for at least another year. Okay, the next position is the Vice Vice Chairman. Jay is the current Vice Chairman. So I'll ask for nominations for Vice Chairman.
Nominate Jay.
Lance nominates Jay. Do we have a second? I'll second it. Okay. Any other nominations? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All in favor of Jay for Vice Chairman? Say aye.
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 Opposed? None? Okay, Jay, you've got it. And the the last position now as the clerk. And Missy has been doing that sort of unofficially. And she's been doing a great job at it. So let me ask Missy, would 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 you be okay continuing with that? And if we make you the official clerk of the commission, would that be all right with you?
Sure.
Good. Good, thank you. Thank you. So can I hear a So, can I hear a uh, nom- nomination for a clerk?
I nominate Missy to be the clerk. J P R.
We have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, who was that?
It was me, Lance.
Okay. Alright, um. Any other nominations? Here, here, hearing none, call a vote. All in favor of Missy for clerk? Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, congra- congratulations, thank you. The only, the other item on the agenda is is the budget preparation. And um. Got a very late step on this because either I missed something that. Was sent to me or somehow it never, never got to, got to me. So, so uh. The month or so we usually spend put putting it together and, you know, trying to. Cross the Ts and dot the Is, we've got the rest of this week to do it. I've gotten inputs from. Uh, Bill and Alan from the Sawmill. And uh. Rebecca sent sent me uh, some in- inputs also. I mean, the the maintenance and operation budget are pretty. Most, most of the items are standard, things we just have have to do, you know, every, every year. So tho- those are straight straightforward. But um. There are, there are some uh. Some, some things that I listed earlier. That we prob- may, depending on. Funding that we have this year and how much we can get accomplished, we may have to put. Uh, some of those off into into next year. And on the the capital request part. I I sent out a cou- couple of ideas. Um, and one, one was the, the siding. And the window frames on the west side of the house that are so rotted that woodpeckers are. Making nests, nests in the, in the window frames, so um. That that needs, needs some attention and then not just the future. And the other is painting, continue painting. We, we, you know, we're not gonna get the whole, the whole thing done this year for sure. So can try to put additional funds to continue the, the painting. I don't know.
I have a, I have a quick question. I I think I remember you said you were putting in five hundred dollars for research. Is that still the way what we're operating on?
Yeah, uh, yeah, act- yes, um, I'm putting, putting in. Uh, it's it's kind of a miscellaneous category that includes the center school. And the research. And last year we put in nine hundred. You know, to be divided between the two, so the budget would be in the, yeah, you know, about five hundred dollars is what we put in for research. There'll be probably another five hundred for the the center school, but I need to talk to Ken about that to see what, what, you know. What he thinks might be needed.
Okay, that that's good, because that would help with the signage for the public buildings where there wouldn't be a homeowner to, to, to pay for it.
Yeah, well, if, if, if you think. You know, you got, got to the point where where you need, you can put a number. On it to to accomplish, you know, whatever, whatever it might be. Uh, maybe you're not quite to that point yet, so we can go with.
Maybe not.
Five, five hundred.
Maybe that's for a little, a little down the road.
The following year might have a fairly well-defined program and approach that might need. Some funding. You know, and then we can discuss that.
Okay.
Okay, any, any other questions on the budget?
Nope. Nope.
Bill, Bill, are you there?
Yep, I'm here Ben, I was just looking up um. When the budget meetings are.
Have to do on the budget, do you have any uh, words of advice, suggestions or?
Yeah, can, can you hear me? Okay, so I was just looking up when the budget meetings are, they're in March. Um, I'm trying to find when the historic district is due to present, but I'm still looking, so. Um, I'll get that to you guys.
Okay.
But no, no, I don't, I don't have any specific recommendations regarding your budget, but.
Now, is, is it, is it, is it true, I've got to talk to the the finance director, I guess. Uh, that the system or software we used last year for, for capital. Is gonna be used this year for both, you know, the regular.
Yeah.
Budgets and the capital, is that true?
Yeah, well, it's uh, we bought some new modules, so it's called ClearGov. And it's supposedly easier to work with and you, you put your bu- you put your budget together directly in the ClearGov software. And I believe you'll be getting some training on how to use it too.
Okay, because it, I was wondering if, if, if I need to know the the format for that. System or.
Yeah.
Remember last year, the love, love, in in putting the regular budgets, I think is fairly straight, straightforward.
Yeah.
Shouldn't be that much different, but for capital, it seemed like. The information required was somewhat different than what we had done in in the past.
Did you do it in Excel or did you do it on the town's software?
Yeah, actu- actually it was. To me, it seemed like there was less required. Or it was.
Yeah, so if you, you you were probably using ClearGov, if if you weren't using Excel. You were using the new software and it would be easier.
Yeah, and this is also will allow the public to. Kind of pay in and look at.
Not that they ever do, but they can, yeah.
They can, yeah. Okay. Alright, well, thanks.
Sure, sure. And by the way, um, I did go look up who your liaison is and it's Tim Ryan. I totally missed that. So Counselor Ryan is your new liaison, so. I'll remind him. They sent me the invitation to the meeting, so I don't think Christina knew either.
He's still wanting to join us every, every month though.
I may do that from time to time. I like this group.
Okay. Alright, well, unless there's something else, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion, we adjourn, Jay.
Second?
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved.
Rebecca.
Sorry, I'm muted and I couldn't figure it out. I had a question for Bill that we've discussed in the past is because of minimum wage changing. With budgeting, do we have to figure that out? With the minimum wage increases with the amount I make? Because we can't really cut the amount of tasks I do because they just seem to accumulate anyways. But it, do we need to adjust that so that we're not in that minimum wage funny spot that we talked about years ago?
Yeah, for you, I would guess so, but I don't know for sure because you're a contractor. So I think that's a question for Matt Bonan, the new finance director. That is a good question.
Yes.
Alright, well, I I have to speak with him about a couple of things, so I'll ask him. Ask him that and see what, what we need to do as far as the budget, budget goes.
And then that brings us to the lease part that I still don't have a lease. So we might need to adjust all. You know.
You still don't have a lease?
I still don't have a lease.
It's a month, it's a month to month at this.
I don't like it.
Oh, oh, okay.
It makes things very difficult with trying to do things when. We've been through so much with letter remediations to still have a lease.
Yeah, so again, I would, I would talk to Matt Bonan about that, the new finance guy.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, I'd start with that then. Talk to Matt. He's, he's very familiar with the town's finances because he used to be our auditor.
Oh, really?
Yeah, yeah, so he's, he's worked with, with the finance director with Marcia for years. I'm gonna say probably six years, so he's, he's very familiar with the town's finances, so I, I would just ask him these questions.
That's a big help.
Absolutely, yeah, we're lucky to get him.
Yeah.
And Marcia's gonna stick around and help us with the budget too, so. She's not gone, she's just retired.
Yeah, she's gonna stick around for the budget.
Yep, she's gonna help Matt with the budget.
Well, that's good.
Yeah.
Okay, so, all in favor of adjourning?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, we're adjourned. Thank, thank you all, returned at uh. Ten minutes to eight. Alright, thank you all, take care.
Good night, everybody. Bye bye.
Good night.